Okay, I think, I think it's time for us to get started and as my preacher says, we'll start about fourish, fourish tonight. You know, sort of tenish on the morning, we're starting for. All right, the meeting come to order. Have our invocation at this time, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, the many blessings that you have so generously bestowed here upon us. We just ask that you continue to help us to be able to help those in need that are less fortunate than we are. We ask that you continue to watch over our city, our country, and Lloyd, we just ask you to continue to lift us up in the days we are down and help us celebrate your name in the days we are on high. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to have our two council members that had been away, Mr. Strickland and Ms. Bryant. We're very glad to have you all back with us. Hope things continue to go well for you. Item three is an adoption of the business agenda. I had opportunity to review it when someone's ready to entertain a motion to approve it as presented or if there are any conflicts or changes that need to be made, we do so.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as stated on paper.
Okay, the motion is by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Stainback. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, no, the motion will be approved as it is presented. Anybody on unscheduled public comment? Okay. Item five is approval of the city council minutes on the June 17th regular meeting. We would need a motion to approve those also as presented or amended.
I make a motion that we adopt the, uh, the approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Bell, who hears second to his motion, counsel by Mr., uh, second by Mr. Jackson. Any more discussion on that matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the minutes would be approved. Item six is a public hearing. Call on our, uh, planning director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. Tonight I bring before you a rezoning request. For those who might not be familiar, a rezoning map amendment, or rezoning, is the legal process of changing a designated use of a property as defined by your local zoning ordinance. Zoning categories typically include residential, commercial, industrial, agriculture, and mixed-use spaces. Each category defines what you can and cannot do on the property. Rezonings are also legislative decisions. This includes the adoption, amendment, or repeal of a regulation under North Carolina General Statute 160D or an applicable local act. The term is also, the term also includes the decision to approve, amend, or rescind a development agreement. Therefore, city council's consideration of zoning map amendments are legislative decisions and are approved by a simple majority vote. A rezoning application was submitted by Ray Ramsey, applicant and property owner of parcels located along Clearfield Drive in the Roanoke Rapids jurisdiction. The existing use of the parcels is commercial, and as shown on the aerial photo provided, the land is undeveloped with approximately .60 acres and 177 feet of street frontage. The current zoning for this location is B3 commercial, and the requested zoning for the properties is R3 residential. When making a legislative decision for a rezoning request, there are many impacts to consider, such as all of the potential uses, effects to neighboring properties, the general public, traffic, utilities, overall neighborhood character, and schools. Items to omit from consideration are ethnicity, religion, income, and whether the properties and/or uses are rented or owned. A photo of the subject property is provided on your screen so you can see that location and what its current state is. Surrounding the location of the rezoning request is a mix of commercial and residential uses, including its current B3 zoning commercial district, shown in pink, and the requested R3 residential zoning district, shown in brown. Should the rezoning be approved, any construction and site plans submitted for development would have to be evaluated by city staff and the Development Review Committee. The DRC, Development Review Committee, includes the Roanoke Rapids Sanitary District, North Carolina Department of Transportation, Roanoke Rapids Public Works, Fire, Planning and Code Enforcement, Engineering, and Dominion Energy. Traffic considerations for Clearfield Drive would be reviewed and approved by Roanoke Rapids Public Works. There are no specific utility considerations that should negatively impact the properties. Other items of consideration that will be evaluated are screening, draining, stormwater retention, and detention. Opaque screening between commercial and residential uses would be required at the burden of the developer. Typical opaque screening requires a height of at least eight feet, which could consist of a wall, fence, landscaped earth firm, or vegetation. The site would also be evaluated for water supply, for firefighting operations, and driveways that meet that, excuse me, and that driveways meet the requirements for apparatus ingress and egress. Provided on your screens are examples for permitted uses allowed within the R3 residential district. The R3 residential district is designed to accommodate two-family residences, such as duplexes, and multifamily dwelling units, such as apartments and townhomes. On Thursday, July 17th, the Roanoke Rapids Planning Board held a public meeting to review the request and provide a recommendation. Following a brief discussion, the Planning Board voted for a favorable recommendation to city council for adoption of the rezoning request. Legislative decisions require property owner notification and advertisement of the public hearing. Public notice was advertised in the Daily Herald on July 26th and August 2nd. Written notice was sent by first-class mail to property owners within 100 feet on Monday, July 21st. The site was also posted. At this point, the Planning Department has not received any comments or inquiries regarding the request. Staff believes that the request is reasonable, considering the size and nature of the tract, the consistency of the zoning with the land use plan, the degree of change in the zoning, the allowable uses from the surrounding area, and the benefits and detriments for the owner, neighbors, and surrounding community. Planning staff recognizes that a change from B3 to R3 represents a degree of difference, but there are several existing surrounding residential lots with many similarities in permissible uses. Planning staff recommends in favor of the request and find it to be consistent with the area land uses and supported by the comprehensive plan. Some of the supporting factors of the comprehensive plan are to support infill development, provide effective buffering and/or landscaping where commercial development adjoins existing or planned residential uses, utilize mixed-use areas, economic development efforts should encourage the revitalization and reuse of currently unused or underutilized properties, and actively recruit and retain a younger workforce to the city by supporting diverse, affordable workforce housing. There are two requested motions for the rezoning request this evening. A motion and a vote for the statement of consistency, and a motion and a vote concerning the final decision to adopt the rezoning request. Subject to your questions, this concludes my presentation. It would now be appropriate to open the floor for public comment, or if you have any specific questions for me, I would be glad to answer those.
Got questions for the director? This is in the city limits and not ETJ, correct?
Correct.
Are we allowed to ask a question about whether or not this would be taxable, have a lower tax property or not?
You can't make a, you can't make a zoning decision based on that, unfortunately.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to ask, okay. Okay, well, at this time, I would declare that the public hearing will be open. Anyone that wish to speak on this matter, we'd like for you to come forward to the podium, state your name and where you live. Good evening.
And I live at 924 East 7th Street here in Roanoke Rapids. And I'm, um, Mr. Ramsey is the one that's asking for the rezoning to build some townhouses that would be individually owned instead of just more apartments. And he owns property right next to it where the Gingerbread House has been in the past. And we've, now we need some, some new housing for people to bring. We have people coming to look at Roanoke Rapids, and they don't see any, of course, we have some new building that's questionable that's going to be starting, but I think this would be very beneficial for the city because it would have places for people to live and some new, new, new construction.
Did I understand you say they would be owned by?
They would be, they would be, they would be for sale, so they'd individually own.
And they'll be, they'll be townhouses then and not apartments?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Harris. Is anyone else that wishes to speak on the matter? If not, we declare the public hearing be closed. You want to get us started?
Sure. So at this time, you're able to make two different motions, okay? The first would be for the statement of consistency.
That's on page five, where we, okay. Everybody, everybody okay? Found out where that is and everything? Okay, you see, you have three options there. We would need a motion and a vote on it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt the presented statement of consistency to amend the zoning map to a residential district by Halifax County, parcel 0920475 and 0920474 described in the staff report dated July 21st, 2025.
Okay, the motion that is on the floor is by Councilman Jackson and second by Ms. Bryant. Is any more discussion on this matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion will be approved.
Okay. The second request from the Planning Department is for a motion and a vote concerning a final decision to adopt the rezoning request. You have multiple options to choose from.
For clarification, the staff and the Planning Board recommend in favor of.
Yes.
Approval.
Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to approve an amendment to the Roanoke Rapids zoning map to change the zoning classification of properties located on Clearfield Drive, identified as Halifax County Parcels 0920475 and 0920474 to R3 Residential District, described in the staff report dated July 21st, 2025.
Okay, the motion, the motion is by Councilman Strickland, was it you?
Second.
I think, I think, Mr. Stainback, I believe, on the second. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, I'll oppose no, and the motion will be approved.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is consideration of budget amendment on unauthorized substance, substance tax.
I think that there's a resolution ahead of that one.
I'm sorry, A is, uh, the Weldon to Raleigh passenger rail corridor.
All right, I'll take that one. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, um, during the May meeting of the Halifax County Intergovernmental Association, or HCIA for those listening, um, met for our bi-monthly meetings, and the topic of the passenger rail, um, transportation system was briefly discussed. And a part of that, if you'll recall, several years ago, there was discussion about passenger rail going from Weldon, north, south, um, and now the transportation, uh, I guess, looking at it statewide, there seems to be a more of a demand for transportation to Raleigh um, through passenger rail. And while it is, um, something that's not in the immediate, immediate future, it is, um, encouraged for the city and other participating local governments and HCIA to support a resolution that would have, enable the funding and the development of the Weldon to Raleigh passenger rail corridor. Um, this does not obligate the city to anything. It's just more of a expression of support that we would like to see, uh, this project come to fruition in the future, um, subject to acquisitions and funding itself. Um, the resolution has been drafted and prepared by Halifax County and shared with us, um, and has been tailored to the city of Roanoke Rapids to express our support for the expedited implementation of the Weldon to Raleigh passenger rail corridor within the DOT's corridor identification development program. Um, the city of Roanoke Rapids in this, uh, resolution encourages all local county, state, uh, leaders to pursue the funding, um, and to support this in advocacy and collaboration efforts. And then also is a way of reaffirming our support for, uh, the passenger rail station in Weldon. I think at this point, a passenger rail system would benefit our community, our area, whether it's going to Raleigh or Richmond. Um, so unless you have any questions, um, just ask for your, a motion and a vote to approve Resolution 2025.07.
Okay, do we hear such a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025 dot zero seven, supporting funding and development of the Weldon to Raleigh passenger rail corridor.
Second. Okay, got the motion by Ms. Bryant, and second by Mr. Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion be approved. And we thank you. Um, next we have unauthorized substance tax.
Good evening. Um, the police department received, um, $164.46 of OSC unauthorized substance abuse tax. Um, I would like to ask you to approve, um, ordinance number 2025 point 25.
Okay, hear such a motion?
Mr. Bell, I'll make a motion to adopt budget amendment ordinance 2025 point 25 in the amount of $164.46 for the OSC unauthorized substance tax.
Okay, the motion is by Mr. Stainback, or your second, second by Mr. Jackson. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion will be approved.
Thank you.
We already had your report. Any other business?
No other business, somewhere.
Ma'am?
Um, okay, a report to the council tonight. Uh, this evening at 5 o'clock, the National Night Out begins at Halifax Community College, which is in concert with, um, several law enforcement agencies within the community as well as other public safety organizations, and we encourage folks to attend. Um, that starts at 5:00. There will have some food options there and, um, good time for family and, and, uh, citizens to attend and, and learn and participate and meet the folks that are out here helping to protect their safety. Uh, our next meeting will be in two weeks, on the 19th, and then later that week, on the 22nd, they'll have a fire safety fair at Kirkwood Adams from 5:30 to 8:30, and that's part of conjunction with the music on the avenue, um, that will be hosted at Kirkwood that evening. Our Main Street Director is attending training in Boone this week. That's required as part of program participation. Uh, she recently submitted, and, uh, the report was accepted for our annual statistics and was approved by the Department of Commerce. Our new director, Ashley, she saw a grant opportunity for a bike amenities grant and submitted that application within her first couple of weeks here, and received notification today that the, um, application was selected to receive a bike amenities package from the North Carolina Public Health Division. And what this includes are two bike racks to be installed, um, within the Main Street District, and one public works stand, which is more, has little tools and things to help people make repairs on their bikes, um, to help improve equitable biking access within the city. And speaking of other grants, the police department was notified on Friday of, um, the, the city's grant application with the Governor's Crime Commission. The commissioners approved the city's request, but it will be subject to availability of federal funding that will be allocated to the state. Um, Chief Wiggins will be, uh, out and about some, or out of the office, at least immediately some weeks, or a few days each week over the next. some weeks, or a few days each week over the next couple of months, um, as he's completing some training requirements that are necessary to complete his North Carolina certification. We're still cleaning up from the May 16th storm. Our contractor is still grinding and collecting, and we'll have to remove the debris once those final numbers are calculated and received. That will be turned over to the state for a final, uh, response to our request for reimbursement. Just as a note here, yesterday, um, water leak was determined, or was observed on city property on Henson Street, and that is being corrected now. Like to thank our public works staff as well for their work in, uh, the school zones. They have completed, or they're in the process of completing the annual painting of crosswalks and roadway striping, um, city streets that serve our local schools. The new pickleball courts at Rochelle Park are nearing completion, regularly, the benches that have been donated are, uh, going to be installed, and then, um, the city has also contracted for additional lighting with Dominion Energy to install new light fixtures on existing poles to provide better visibility and enhance safety. The rec desk online registration program, um, staff are developing that with the vendor. Uh, the priority is to have the reservation system for the new pickleball court at Rochelle up and running, um, as soon as possible, as well as for youth basketball registrations. Um, registrations and reservations will be established for other recreation facilities too, but these are the first ones that will be available. Uh, the outdoor pool will close for the season at the end of the day on August the 9th. Uh, one of the main reasons why our pool closes early is due to, uh, many of our lifeguards are, are students, especially college students, that have to return, um, back to school. But the splash pad at Challenger will remain open daily until the weather, as long as the weather is favorable, uh, for those conditions. Uh, and then on August the 18th, the senior center will conduct and adopt a street cleanup. The fire department, as mentioned, the safety fair will be on the 22nd from 5:30 to 8:30, and the newest engine that is received, um, is awaiting graphics after having a new, or having the door painted from a scratch that occurred at the vendor. Uh, the housing development continues with more interest continuing here. Um, the interest in housing development remains strong and is certainly in need here. Um, the Canal Walk 15 building permits are moving forward. Um, stateside landing family apartments are nearing completion, pending final inspections of buildings and the site construction. Uh, there's several special events that are coming up, and our staff have done a really good job trying to coordinate these for the best interests of the public safety, um, and those are listed there, um, below. And last but not least, and I didn't have this planned to say, but our effective September 1st, our fire chief, Jason Patrick, will be retiring with 30 years of credible service, and so, um, this is his second-to-last meeting, and we will make plans to recognize him soon. But we are, uh, we've solicited interest from the fire department staff to create a transition team, and we'll be working with them, and we'll have some more to share about that, but, um, we certainly, uh, will miss Jason very much, but his contributions to the city will, will be lasting a lot longer than, uh, than his years of service, I'm sure, to the city. But, um, anyway, that concludes my report at this time, but don't forget about National Night Out tonight, um, at HCC.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Stainback, second by Mr. Bell. Any more discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed no, we'll be adjourned. 20 minutes.